Okay, so like I was just saying, I don't really know what to do for chapter three. I have four, chapter four questions planned. Um, that will not take two hours. There's no more questions after that, then. We're done, I guess, but uh, I'm happy to do more questions like I have the time allotted from now to noon. So I'm happy to do more questions, but. We'll see what. And I think we let's start with like. What, what, what could possibly be on this exam? Cause this is, this midterm is like super weird because like we're just tested on one to three, chapter one to three. Now we're being tested on chapter one to four. But like. You know, when we're well into other stuff in the course. So. I mean, I think he confirmed that it's gonna be four questions. So we have, let's put a little four dots here. Yeah, actually, that's true. Let's actually also open up the formula sheet. That's a good point. I don't. Solution manual. Let's open up that uh. Formula sheet. Now. Pretty much the essential question we have to try to confidently answer is. Just because it's not on the formula sheet, does that necessarily mean we won't be tested on? I don't know. I don't know if the answer to that is yes or no. Is the formula sheet just meant to be like a little help, like a little like, oh, use specific formulas in case you forget this one? Or is it supposed to be like, this is what's gonna be on the test? I don't know. I don't, that's the thing that like I have no idea. So. It's a little nerve wracking. Here's the formula sheet. And you're right, there is no. Well, actually, no, there is binomial, binomials there. Right? Binomials there, that's a, that's a discrete one. Oh, he said what's on the formula sheet is likely to be on the midterm. But you might not use everything on the form. Yeah, okay. If that's what he said, then that's, that's good. That's a good, that's a good thing to hear. So uh, we have a discrete one, we have Gaussian, he said no normal, like no normal distribution on the test? Is that what you mean by no normal? I'm surprised it is no normal. Well, it's Gaussian, here's normals. Yeah, Gaussian is normal. We have the normal distribution right there. And uh. Yeah. And uh, we just have a couple other continuous distributions. Conditional probability, independence, this mess, whatever that is. And then uh permutations and combinations, which are. So they, these, this, like, this kind of takes up all of the chapter one, two questions, right? That's all kind of this. This is like the chapter three question, I guess, chapter three is that and that. I guess you can't see, sorry. And then. And. Yeah, there's no geometric series formulas, which I hope means we don't need to use the geometric series formulas, right? I think that's what the first, like the first as we did a lot. So I think that's, I would say that, okay, so, so let me make a guess of what's gonna be on, like, I'm just gonna make a guess. I think there will almost certainly be a normal distribution question. Right, normal. Normal distribution. Uh, just like using, using z scores, like, like doing like um. X minus mu over sigma, like that thing. What's that x execution variable G? Oh, okay, that one, yeah, I can like mention it, I guess, like I've never used it before, but there's one question I know which would, which would uh. Which would use it fine, so sure, we could, we could do it with that. Uh, okay, so this is probably gonna be a normal distribution question. I mean, there's gonna be some chapter three question, right? Some kind of chapter three question for sure. So this could be like, I mean, I, I probably a binomial maybe. Actually, you know what? I think one chapter three question, yeah, yeah, actually, how about this? I think one chapter three question that probably makes sense is to find like the CDF. For discrete. Right? Because we didn't get asked that on the first test, a CDF. Um, so. That. Uh, and then probably like expected value or something like this, right? Mix into this, I don't know. Expected value. Say expected value, maybe. Variance, well, we were kind of asked expected value, so maybe the expected value would be for a continuous one. The expected value. And variance. For a continuous. These are my guesses, I don't know, right? In. And. What else? Oh, and then probably, I forgot how I figured this one, probably like find. Find uh, like, like y equal, yeah, that'd be especially because this formula is here, probably like y equals uh, like G of x. Uh, find. You know, the, find. The uh, PMF, not a PDF. Uh, PDF Y of Y. And the CDF. Those are my guesses. I don't know. Right? This is my guess of what's gonna be on this test. Maybe involved in here somehow is gonna be some kind of permutation, I don't know, I don't know why this is on here too bad, but. But I know why, because the test is one to. Or, but. Uh, yeah, this is my guess. We'll see if I'm right, um, but I will do these similar questions to this today. I have a, I have a normal distribution question, that's the first one. Question? No. Um, oh. Uh, and then uh, I have two examples like this, actually, three examples like this, because this is, I'm pretty sure these are a lot of examples like this, pretty, hopefully it's gonna be on there. There's no exponential on the uh, uh, let me. Who's the, who's unmuted? Can I, can I mute? I can mute on my. This is. Did I mute for everybody? I don't know if I muted for everybody, but muted for me. Uh, there's no uh, there's no exponential on the, on the formula sheet. So does that, does that mean there's no exponential on the midterm? I, I think. I, I think. I think. Right? Um, so. So yeah, so that's kind of our. Look, outlook here, what's, what's gonna happen? I don't know, we'll see anyways, let's, let's start. Rob said we'd be giving everything we need, if exponential is on the midterm, we push, we push back, yeah. Sure, yeah, yeah. Okay, so uh. Ready to go? Any questions before I get started? No? Sounds good. Everybody check if you're muted. People not muted, so. And uh. Yeah, let's uh, let's get going. So here, let's see, uh, the first one, I should open up in a new window. The first question is uh. This one, we weren't assigned this one, were we? It doesn't really matter, it is relevant. Or maybe we were assigned this one. Chapter four, no, we weren't assigned this one, but it is like totally relevant to us, so just thought it'd be interesting. So we have a random variable, x. Which is normal. Three nine, so this means that this is your uh, mu, and this is your sigma squared. Right, give it the mean and the variance. So uh, y is five minus x, so we want to find all these probabilities. Really not too bad, but you just have to understand how to work with the normal distribution. So um. Uh, let's see, so uh, first of all, part A, we're looking for probability that x is greater than two. Which of course is one minus the probability that x is less than two. Okay, so this is like the, this is the um. CDF of x, right? Like this is the Fx of two. But we don't know how to do Fx of two for a normal distribution, for a normal distribution, like there is no. It's a crazy integral, like, and it's integral that we don't even have a way to solve. So what we do instead is we relate it to the standard normal distribution. Alright, we convert it into the standard normalization, which we also don't know how to integrate, but at least we have tables full of values for it. So we turn this into z. Is less than, and you do two minus mu over sigma. Right, which is one minus the probability. Let's just keep going down. Uh, which is. One minus the probability. That z is less than two minus three over three, right, because. If sigma squared equal to nine, sigma is three. Um, so then this is one minus the probability that z is less than negative a third. And this is the CDF, right, the cumulative density function of um. What's it called? The standard normal distribution, z is the standard normal distribution. Which has its own function, that's like phi, right, this phi of negative a third or negative zero point three. And let's go on the table he posted, I forgot he posted, let's look on the table that he posted, how to find this actual value. We won't do too many of these, but just to check. So uh, where did he post it? Posted it in. Oh, there, normal table, I see. So. The whole thing? Yeah. Let's see how to use it. Take a screenshot. Okay. Here's our normal table, we're looking for uh, phi of uh, negative zero point three three. Uh, yeah, okay, so this is a little bit of a mess of a table. Basically, here is your z score. That's course, like the, this is called the z score, like the value you're trying to put into the thing. The z value. And here is your uh, phi of z value. Right? Now, uh, you're gonna notice that uh, zero point three three is not on here, right? I mean, so negative zero point three three is not on here, so there's zero point three three, there's not negative zero point three, so it seems like we're stuck. Let me open, actually, I didn't. I've never looked at this table before, so I didn't realize that they didn't have that there, but. There's a property which is fine to use, so let me just open the. Here, just have it, number, what am I doing? Nine. Yeah. Uh. So, yeah, okay. Six three, yeah. So uh, again, negative zero point three three, not on this table, what do we do? Well, there's a property that if you do phi. Of negative z is equal to one minus phi of z. Right? This is important. Um, so we can, even if we're getting a negative value for our z score, I can just do one minus phi of this, right? I can just turn this into one minus, one minus. Phi of zero point three three. Which of course is just one minus one minus is just zero, it's just five zero point three three. Which is equal to. Zero point six, about sixty-three percent. So there's a little bit of working with the. That scores and all that, right? Um, so there's a little bit working with the, with the z scores and uh. The CDF of the standard normal distribution. Using this table is not too bad, right? But notice that like above three, what if you had a z score that was like five, what do you do? Well, basically above three, we just, we just basically say one, like it's approximately one. Right? Because you're so high above all the values that it's approximately a hundred percent gonna be below. Um, and uh. Below, below negative three is zero. Right, so it'd be one minus this. Um. And yeah, that's that. There you go, so there's, that's it, and so these numbers are calculated like using a computer, right? Like, there's no closed form solution for these things, so just a computer calculates these things, and then we just put it into a table. Okay, great, I'll keep moving. So that's part A. Part B. Hopefully you can see that, yeah, part B. Is uh, we have uh, find the probability that y, probability that y is between. Negative one and three. Oh, sorry, yes, is someone asking a question I muted them? There you go, hello, I can hear, I can hear you now, be on mute, I know who it was. Um. So probability. That y is between negative one and three, well, so y is five minus x, right? So that five minus x is between negative one and three. So I'm gonna subtract five from both sides, from all sides of the inequalities, it'd be negative six. Less than negative x, less than negative two. Which is probability that uh, I'm gonna multiply everything by negative one, so six is greater than x is greater than two, so. I flipped when I multiplied by negative one, I flipped all the inequality. Just putting this in a form that we're more used to. Right, is this. And now uh, we can just do this, it's the probability that uh, x is less than six, minus the probability that x is less than two. So just kind of manipulating the probability there a little bit. And then uh, we can again turn this into z scores, right? So it's gonna be x, this is probably that z is less than six minus mu, but. So the formula is z is less than uh, x. Minus mu over sigma. So it's gonna be six minus three over three. I don't really have a question list posted, like, I have a list of questions, but. That's on my other document there, so maybe I'll, I can show after, but we finish the question. So uh, this is, sorry, and then minus the probability that z is less than two minus three over three. Right? So we already did this one, right? We already did this one, so this is um, sixty-three percent, right, sixty-three percent. We did that in the, we did that here. Did that uh. I guess we did one minus this up here, so it's gonna be one minus sixty-three. One minus. And then here, this is the probability that z is less than, well, it'd be one, right? Uh, so uh, z is less than one, let's see, so that's by definition phi of, sorry, that's by definition phi of one. Minus um, thirty-seven percent. Uh, phi of one, well, we go to the table, we find that score of one, which is here, so eighty-four, eighty-four percent. Eighty-four percent minus thirty-seven percent is whatever, there you go. Um, so that's it for part B. And then part C is our conditional probability, I'm doing this also because like this is kind of practice of chapter one and two, or maybe chapter two. Um. Conditional probability and just like general probability rules, which we could possibly be asked again. But uh, because I don't wanna just like do a question that's just like conditional probability. Uh, yeah, so we, we will be given the table, we definitely know how to memorize the table. So probability that x, I hear you.
Yeah, so um, I had a question like.
Yeah, go for it.
Did you know to, to sub like mu and sigma squared for um, the values of three and nine in this question? Because it's a normal distribution, distribution problem?
Uh, yeah, like, like. Do you mean like, how did I get three and nine, like? Or how did I, how did I know to do specifically this?
I know that was. I know that was given in the question, but I'm saying like uh, did you know to use a normal table because it's a normal distribution?
Yeah, because, because I'm related, yeah, because, because x is normal with three nine. And so I wanna find these probabilities, but these probabilities end up being, like, I can't find this directly, I have to relate it to that, the z score. There's no other way to find this number. Basically. Right, I have to relate it to the, to the z value here, so the, the standard normal distribution, so yeah, yes, because it was normal.
Okay, thanks.
So um, let's see here, so we have probability that x is greater than four, given that y is less than two, well, let's just like manipulate this a little bit. This is probably that x is greater than four, given that y is, y is less than two is what I wrote, but y is five minus x. Is less than two. So I'll just, I'll just uh, move x over, move two over. Sorry, probability. So x is greater than four, given that um, uh, three is uh, x is greater than three. So this is equal to the probability that x is greater than four, and that x is greater than three. Over the probability that x is greater than four. This top probability, that probability is just the probability that, oh, sorry, this is three here, I'm into three. Uh, this top probability is the probability that x is greater than four. That's all that is, right, greater than four and greater than three is just greater than four. Um. So uh, because if it's greater than four, then by default it is greater than three. So uh, and then the bottom here is probably that x is greater than three. Which is one minus the probability that x is less than four. Over one minus the probability that x is less than three, I have to do this because. The CDF is defined like this, right? Less than. Or equal. Doesn't matter. And once again, I just gotta do z scores here, one minus the probability that uh, z. Is less than four minus three over three. Over one minus probability that z is less than three minus three over three. Well. This top here is just phi of a third. And this bottom is just one minus phi of zero. Five zero is a half, phi of a third, let's see. Five a third is sixty-three percent, like we said before. So this is going to be. One minus sixty-three percent. Over one minus fifty percent. Right, which is thirty-seven percent over uh, fifty percent. Right, which is. Thirty-seven. Fifty. Seventy-four. There we go, that's uh. That's that one, and that's the whole question, actually. I do think, I do think the midterm, sorry, one second, I do think the midterm is gonna be less like. Word problems where you have to like think about probabilities and stuff like that, and more just like computation, you just like plug in numbers and stuff like this, I think that would be fine.
Um, can I ask a question?
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, for part C of this question. And I just, I just wanna clarify a few things, so if you can go down to part C. Like, if you could go down to the part where you do the conditional property, probability formula? This is just that, uh, from the formula sheet, right, for conditional probability?
Uh, probably, yeah, let's see.
Yeah, like the given, that, that, that formula.
Yeah, yeah, this, this, this one here, this like.
Okay, okay, cool. Uh, the next thing is, so after that, you immediately go to probability of x greater than four over probability of x greater than three. Is it, uh, I don't know if you discussed this earlier, but is it because if x is greater than four, it's already given that it's greater than three, so it's already a hundred percent chance that it's greater than three?
Yeah, and if x, if x is between four and three, then it's not this, right, it's not both, it has to be both, right?
Right.
So this, this condition is equivalent to this condition.
So I get that, and the next thing you do is uh, you do one minus probability of x less than four. Is it, uh, because since x is, it's an, it's in continuous, that means you have to find all the probabilities that. X is like, wait, do you have to like find like the, like the complement case?
The reason is, is because when we're working with normal distributions, the only tool we have. For normal distributions to actually find numbers, like probability numbers, is this table, right, this table right here, that's the only tool we have. So that table is by definition. Phi of x is the probability that z, that is less than x, or whatever, I could call it z, lowercase. Right? So I have to have a probability in this form, that. Something less than something, right? CDFs are always given like that, right, CDFs are always something less, it's never like, it's never this way. Never, um, never this way, it's always this way. So I just did one minus to that, and then I convert that into the standard normal distribution.
Okay, 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 because that, that, that last bit was what I was confused on, so thanks.
Yeah, of course, happy now. Okay, uh, let me just see if there's any other questions.
You're also going to post these uh, notes in the.
Yeah, always, always, yeah.
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure.
So to convert to CDF, we just kind of one minus and kindness reverse the thing, right?
Yeah.
And we always need to find the CDF because like, I don't know, it's related to the problem?
Yeah, because this is the probability, we're looking for this probability, right? So I, I turned that into like, so like, let's say, let's say I stopped here, how do I figure this out? Okay, well, I can't, right, like, if, if this was any other. Distribution, or not any other, but if there was, if this is many other distributions, you could like do an integral to find this, right? But the normal distribution, the integral is like impossible.
So we go from CDF and then we convert it to normal?
The, the standard normal, yeah, this is, this is, this is standard normal, yeah.
And then from there we go off, okay.
And then we can actually find these numbers that, from the table.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Nope. Okay. Let's keep moving, so next one. Oh, why do we do division at last part? What do you mean, like? Why do we do, like, because I have a fraction, basically. Maybe I'm misunderstanding the question. These two divided, because it's just like, I carry along with the fraction. Conditional probability is a fraction. Yeah, we need x less than x, because that's the definition for CDF, so we have to get into that form, yeah. Four minus three over three, well, oh, this here, well, that's like, that's always like, if you have probability that x is less than x. Uh, and, and x is normally distributed with a mean of mu and a variance of sigma squared. Then this is equal to probability that z is less than x minus mu over sigma.
Is that given in the formula sheet, or is, is that just something you have to know?
I think you're just supposed to know that, uh, it's, no, no, that is there, that is. Right here. Right there. X minus mu over sigma. I'd be very surprised if we didn't get a question exactly like this on it, I think we're gonna get a question exactly. Um. So uh. Anyways, that's that, let's move on, unless there's any more questions. Next one I have is this one. So these next two questions kind of work hand in hand, actually, next three questions are all kind of the same question, to be honest. But just uh, different, I think we're gonna get a question like this. Pretty like, we did it, they're pretty good questions, a lot in the homework and. So x is a continuous random variable with PDF that, okay, notice x is between zero and two. Zero otherwise. But x, let y be x squared. Find the CDF of y. So we have a PDF here, right, EDF. Here. We have a, we're looking for the CDF of y, not even the PDF, PDF y comes after, looking for the CDF of y, cumulative density function. For distribution. Yeah, no, this density. Or density, no, distribution, distribution. Um. So there's, there's just a, there's just a process for this one, like it, you might think you can go right for the CDF of y, like the definition of the CDF of y, right? Is, well, I mean, you basically do go right for it, the CDF y, so the CDF of y, which is. This, right, that's like the symbol for it, is by definition, the probability that y is less than y, this is just the definition of that function. Uh, okay, so let's just keep manipulating this a little bit, this is the probability that x squared is less than y. Right? And now this is kind of the, this is kind of the tricky part here. We have to account for, this question is something weird, so um. X squared is less than y, or y, yeah, or. Other way around, but. We can. Basically turn this, you, you would think you would turn this into negative root y, less than x, less than root y. Right? Uh. Because we have like. X squared is less than y. So this is, this is usually an equivalent statement, this statement right here, that x is between root y and negative root. But there's actually a, an important little distinction here with this question is, look, x has to be positive. X cannot be, cannot be negative. Y can also not be negative, but that doesn't exactly matter in this case. X cannot be negative, x can have to be greater than zero. So this, this is equivalent. Right, this is equivalent to um, the probability that x is between zero and root y. And that's an important distinction to make there, so we will just do this instead. This is simpler, I'm thinking now, is there a way to just do this and then make your answer still right at the end, probably actually if I, I think about it hard enough. But. It's good to just check. What can x be? X cannot be negative, so x cannot be between negative. What can X be? X cannot be negative. So X cannot be between negative root Y. So if you imagine it, right, like you have, you have your, you have your PDF, this is your, whatever, this is some PDF. That you have. Like. Right? Um, or I guess it's between zero and two, so let me. Means that this is our. Um. Axis, this is zero. This is two. We have some PDF in this zone. Actually, I guess it looks like this vaguely. X to the four. Alright, so we have this. So we're looking for the probability that X is between, this is, this is, is between root Y. And negative root. I'm just arbitrarily kind of putting where root Y is, right? Well, this probability, which is the probability in this zone, is, is just, it's just this probability, right? It's just this problem. That's there. Um. Any questions? Yeah, I think if you leave it with the negative root Y, it'll just be zero later. I think that's true. I did that though, and I didn't get zero later for one question, like when I did this, I, I made a mistake. But to be honest, I don't, I don't know, I would just, I would just do it like this, to be honest. I would just look at it and just. See if that makes sense. Uh, we. PDF in this case is probably just, I, I forget the word always, I don't know, then integrated. The PDF of, yeah, you could find the PDF of, how would you find the PDF of this? From the formula sheet. Just using. Yeah, how would you find the PDF? From the formula sheet. Maybe, do you mean this? I don't know if you mean that. Okay. Why do we start from zero? Cause, cause this probability from here to here. Is the same as the probability from here to here. Yeah, probably, you're, you're definitely, you're definitely right, that some, later on, this would, if you did it like this, you would just get zero for this probability, but again, like I did it, maybe we'll try it, we'll try it. I, I did it like that when I did this question and I got it wrong. So, I, I, let's see. Um, but anyways, from, from here on, it's, it's not too bad. So from here on, it's just kind of. Mechanical thing, so. This is by definition, the probability that X is less than root Y. Oh, yeah. Probably, yeah, you could probably use that formula. Yeah. Uh, I've never used that ever. Like, I've never used this, this formulas, but. Look here. Uh. Yeah, but, but we, we'll try one today. There's one, there's one uh. There's one question where uh it's on there. Probably X is less than Y minus probability that X is less than zero, right? But uh, this is zero. Right? This is zero. So uh. We just have that, this is the probability. That X is less than root Y. So so far, we've, we've, uh, sorry, and by definition, this is F. X of root Y. So we've just shown that FY of Y. Is equal to FX of root Y. Right? So this is the truth statement. Now we take the derivative of both sides, right? Ddy. Both sides. So this is going to be, is twelve, but yeah. Uh. Oh, I need CDF, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right. Part A is looking for CD. If it was looking for PDF, we take the derivative, you don't, you're right. So now, um. I guess if we need to find the CDF of this, right? So this is going to be uh.
Could you scroll up for a second?
Yeah.
Uh, you know how, okay, we have P of zero less than X less than root Y?
Yeah.
Um, could you explain how you went from that line to the second line? Like, why are you subtracting um?
It's basically, yeah, I, I understand what you mean. So it's basically like, if you have, if you have this. Right? The, there's, there's a formula where this is probably that X is less than B minus probability that X is less than A. Like, that's just the formula. That we, that we know, but it's also like, I can explain why it's true quickly, right? So if you have like some. PDF, like, let's say this is your PDF. And you wanna know what's the probability in this range, A. B. Well, you would take, you would take this probability, so the CDF here, which is this. Cumulative, right, from, from negative infinity to B. And you'd subtract off this section, right? And all you have left. Is the probability from A to B.
Um, could, could you also do um? So P of X less than Y subtract. One minus P of X less than zero? Or sorry. Greater than zero, or sorry, less, less, less.
So, sorry, say, say, say it again, what was it?
So, okay, so the, 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 the first part is the same, P of, uh, P of X less than root Y. But then for the second part, you do subtract. Bracket. One minus P of X. Less than zero.
That, you, that wouldn't be, or you could do greater than zero, but I don't know why you would do that, cause that's, that's a. That's a mess now. Right?
Okay.
Well, I mean, I guess in this case, this would just be one, so it's one minus one, which is zero. So you get the same answer, yeah. This, this is correct, like this is mathematical, but more complicated.
Okay.
Make sense?
Yep.
Um, so uh, great, so, okay, so we don't take the derivative, but now we split this into cases, right? So we're looking for, this is the probability. That X is less than root Y. Right, well, this depends on where root Y is, right? Is root Y uh? Negative? Is root Y, well, root Y can't be negative. So is root Y between zero and two? Is root Y from two to? Infinity, right? That changes the answer. So that's why this is gonna immediately be a piecewise function. So if. Root, so if root Y. Is less than zero. The zero, but root Y can't be less than zero, so this is not a condition that we uh, that we have here. Um, but if root Y is less than zero, then. There's that. Uh, so, yeah, if uh, root Y. Is between zero and two. Then. Let me just write this here, right? Between zero and two, which is in this range, between zero and two, then the, the CDF is this integral, right? This integral. Right, it's the definite, by definition, it's probably less than it. So it's the, it's gonna be the integral. From zero to root Y. Of our um. Uh, PDF, which is five over thirty-two X to the four. X to the four DX. And then if wa- root Y. Is greater than two, then it's just one. You could call it the integral from zero to two of all this, but it, it's, that's gonna be one, so. Um. Let's just simplify our bounds and everything like that a little bit, right? So this is uh. If uh, so here. So zero, we can just say Y is less than, again, this condition never happened, so we don't really have to account for that. Uh, I'll deal with that integral in a second. This is zero, uh, Y is between zero and four. And this is Y is greater than four. One. Let's figure out this integral here now. This integral is the, the integral from zero to a root Y. Of five over thirty-two X to the four. DX. Which is of course five over thirty-two. Times. X to the five over five, evaluated from zero to root Y. Which is um. Uh, it's one over thirty-two times uh, so. Root or Y to the five over two. Um, that's it. The one over thirty-two. Uh. Y to the five over two. So uh, we plug that in here, one over thirty-two. Y to the five over two. And that's it. Hold, let me check that. Let me check that that's right. Question five. One over thirty-two Y to the five, yeah, that's right. So that's it, that's your CDF. That is your cumulative. Da- distribution. Distribu- Uh. So, yeah, okay. If there's no questions, I will keep moving. Y is less than four. Uh, I just squared. I just squared everything here. Where did we? You can do that, and the inequality is true still if everything's positive, so everything is positive. If this was like. I don't know, negative three here, you couldn't do that. Yeah, manipulate it more.
Can you just give me like a minute to write that down? Like, I just need a.
Sure, sure. I don't know, about sixty seconds, but I'll give you. Some time. Uh, I will post the PDF after, so. Uh, we're allowed to solve for the PDF first and then you get CDF. I, yeah, if you get the answer, you get the answer. Can I explain? Five over two, oh, well, it, cause it's. Cause plugging this in, right, it's gonna be root Y to the five. Right, which is. Y to the one-half. To the five. Is Y to the five over two. Sorry, scroll away. Okay.
Um, so, so you get four, well, with, with the new bounds of the CDF, you get four because you square both sides, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay. Okay.
Right? So, okay, so the, the next one that I have, the next question is uh. Is similar one, but uh. Actually, the next two questions are all similar. So here's question ten. Um, oh, sorry, I'm not done with this question, am I? There's more to it. One, two, one. Find the PDF of Y, the PDF of Y. Um, looking for FY. Of Y. Which is gonna be the integral, uh, the integral, no, right, FY of Y is the derivative. Derivative. Back to Y of FY. Right? So taking the derivative of this, you just do it piecewise, right? So. The, we're doing Ddy. Of all this. Right? All the bounds stay the same. This is just going to be zero if Y is less than zero. Uh, derivative of this is gonna be. Move it down, right? So it's gonna be. Five over sixty-four. Y to the three over two. If Y is between four and zero. And zero. Y is greater than, derivative of one is zero. So that is our. PDF. Probability density function. Then, we, that's part B. And now we want also the expected value. Of Y. Right? There's lots of ways we can do this, um. Uh, B was, no, B was uh, A was CDF, B was. If you find PDF first, then you can just integrate that with respect to each bound to find CDF. Uh, yeah, if you find, like, if you wanna go backwards now, right, you could just integrate. This is your uh PDF. Yeah, you just do the integral, you just integral from, from negative infinity to Y. So F. Y of Y. Is the integral from negative infinity to Y of FY. Y. And, yeah, the bounds will show up the same, right? So if, if Y is less than zero, then it's zero. If Y is between zero and four, then it's gonna be the integral of. Integral of uh. Of what? Of, of this, it's gonna be integral of this, right, which is gonna be this. And then if Y is greater than four, then it's gonna be one. Yeah, you could do those two, that works. Totally works. But you can't see the top right corner.
I can't really see the top right corner of like this, the solution, yeah, I think so.
There you go. And my face is underneath that thing. Yeah.
Did you just derive it with respect to Y for the?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I just took the derivative with respect to Y, yeah. That's it. Um, okay, so expected value, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just kind of a hypothetical thing, like, let's say, it's asked you to find like. Uh, the, it asks you to find the PDF of Y, but it's easy, so you just get the derivative, cause you already got the CDF. But if it was the other way around, would you have to take the integral?
Yeah, that's a, that's what I'm saying here, exactly, right? So if it's the other way around, you would integrate, like, if you have the PDF and you wanna find the CDF. You integrate negative infinity to Y.
Okay, so like, if you were given like the PDF, but in X, and then asks you to find the CDF in Y. Do you just have to like convert this?
Oh, sorry, like if you were given this, this CDF here?
Yeah.
Oh, if you're giving this CDF. Yeah, well, actually, this process would be the same, you're, and you're looking for the CDF of Y.
Yeah.
Let's say, so your process would be the same, like, you start with the CDF of Y equal this, equal this, da-da-da, here. We get here.
Okay.
And then we just, we just have this formula, right? We would just have a formula for this exact thing right here. So we wouldn't even have to do. We'd have to take derivatives or anything like that, we would just have a formula.
Okay. Cause for me, the, the, well, the hardest problem, hardest part of this problem is that beginning step, just learning to get the.
Yeah.
Just look, yeah.
Like this express, this, in this expression, and they're getting, getting to here, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's true, that is, that is often the hardest part. After this, it's just sort of mechanical, you just sort of like do what it says. Uh, okay, so uh. Great, so let's find the expected value, expected value of Y is the integral from negative, and like, by definition, is integral from negative infinity to infinity of Y. FY of Y. DY. So let's do it. Well, all that really matters, right, is zero to four, right? This integral zero to four. Of Y, FY is five over sixty-four. Y to the three over two. Uh, DY. So this is the integral zero to four. Of, well, five over sixty-four can come out. This is Y to the five over two. DY. Which is uh, five over sixty-four. Times Y to the uh, seven over two. Times two over seven, integral five and zero. This is five over sixty-four times two over seven. Times four to the seven over two. That's some number, I don't know. Probably in the solution manual, let me just, instead of typing it in myself. Um. It's approximately two point nine. Let's actually just make sure my integral was right. Before. Two over seven. Times. Four. To the. Seven over two. About two point nine. Approximately. It's just an integral. Just have to know how to set up the integral. And then act like, from this point on, it's easy, but setting up the integral can be tricky. Okay. That's it for question C. Right, uh, and for question five. The next one I have is, again, similar. It's, it's good to just like, especially the beginning parts of these questions, just practice it. Um. Maybe we will uh. So it'll actually take us the full two hours. Actually, I only have two more questions left, so, probably not, but if, you know, let me question. Uh, problem ten, X is a continuous random variable with this PDF. Notice X can be any real number now, right? X doesn't have to be just between zero and two, X, any real number. This is like a normal distribution. So. Let Y be root absolute value. X. Find the PDF. So we still do the same process. We start with the CDF of Y, so FY of Y. Is by definition. The probability that uh, Y is less than Y. Right? Which again, by definition, is the probability that root absolute value X is less than Y. Y is root absolute value X. Uh, both numbers are positive here, right? Y has to be positive and. Absolute value X is positive, so we can square both sides. Absolute value of X less than Y squared. And this turns into probability that um. X. Is between Y squared and negative Y squared. Not zero in this case, because X can be negative, right? X can be. That's fine, X can be between negative Y squared. Hold that. Wait that for a second? And then uh, this is the probability that X is less than Y squared. Minus the probability that X is. Less than negative Y squared. Same formulas before. Again, this is just. FXY squared. Minus FX negative. The conclusion to draw here is that FY of Y. Is this. I did that fast, so um. You know, I, like. If you have any questions, let me know. But. Yeah. That's. That's that. Let me open up that. Then we take the derivative with respect to Y of everything, yeah. Right, so we're looking, we're looking for. Uh. Y's. Y squared. Not exactly, we have absolute value of X less than Y squared. This makes sense. This, this should be, this is right, from here to here. Cause if you have like, if you just generally have like, you know, ab- I don't, absolute value of R is less than, less than one, right? This means that R is between one and negative. I don't know, just random example, like, R is some number. Right? So. Then we have this here. This is this is right. Um, so yeah, derivative both sides, D D Y. So this left side is just FY of Y. What we're looking for, right? That's what we're looking for. Right side is FX of Y squared times two Y. General. Minus uh, FX of negative Y squared. Times negative. Negative two. Chain rule again. But finally, we have, I'll factor out the two Y. Two Y. FX Y squared. Plus FX negative Y. We're almost there, right? We just want to find that that's FY of Y. So now, we've related it to formulas we know, right? We know FX. We have FX. We have a formula for FX. So I can just plug this into the formula. So here we have two Y. This is FX, sorry, FX Y squared is gonna be one over root two pi. E to the negative Y to the four over two, Y to the four, cuz Y squared and you square it here as well. Plus one over root two pi. E to the negative, negative Y squared, the squared over two. But negative squared is just positive, right? So it's gonna be two Y. One over root two pi. E to the negative Y to the four over two. Plus one over root two pi, E to the negative Y to the four over two. So this is gonna be four Y over root two pi. E to the negative Y to the four. That's it. That's the final answer. That's Y to the, that's FY. Go for it. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, do we need to use the chain rule here, or could we just um? Uh, solve the uh, the the integral set up by FX? Um, and then uh, and then der, uh, like, get the derivative of that. Does that make sense?
So you mean like, you mean like integrate this from negative infinity to X? Like?
Uh, no, no, no. So scroll down to uh, the end of part A. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So here, when we have FX of Y squared minus FX of negative Y squared, could we just set up those two integrals?
These ones here. Uh, oh, set up those two integrals. What would that look like? FX of Y squared? I mean, you could, but that's not, but but you you wanna take the derivative because you need to find this. You you wanna find the P PDF. You don't wanna find the CDF.
Yeah, but like, so is the line above that? Do you see how we have FX of Y squared?
Yeah.
FX of negative, we could do that integral, do both of those two integrals, get the sum of them to get the 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 CDF, and then take the derivative of the entire CDF. Would that work?
Oh, yeah, sure. Sure, that would work. Let's, I mean, what integral would this even be? Uh, Y squared? This would be the integral from negative infinity to Y squared of um, of this, right? Of this here. Of one over, yeah, you could root two pi, E to the negative X squared over two DX. Um. Yeah, if you can figure out this, oh, you can't integrate this. You can't integrate this.
Oh, there you go.
That's really hard. That's like the Gaussian integral. So yeah, you can, that's really hard to integrate. But yes, theoretically, yes, theoretically, good. You could do that.
Thank you.
Thanks. So yeah. That's it for that question. Similar thing, but just the bounds are kind of work out kind of differently here. And then someone asked me to do this one. That's the last question I have. But yeah, if there's any questions, feel free to. I can scroll back up, but wood part.
Yo, Adam, had you get four Y to talk?
Cuz it's, cuz it's like these two, these two. If it's uniform, it's one over B minus A. That's like the PDF. It's one over B minus. One over one minus. So problem four is let X be a uniform zero to one random variable, let Y be E to the negative X. Find the CDF of Y. Great. So uh, first of all, let's just like look at X for a second, right? So X is uniform zero to one. That means from, if you're looking at the PDF. Right? Sorry, zero to one. It would look like. And that's straight line, zero to one, and the height is one over one minus zero, right, which is. Right, so it's always one over uh, B minus A. One over one minus zero, which is. That's the number there. So that's our X, that's our PD, that's our FX of X. Then, but I wanna find the CDF of Y. So A is the same, remains the same processes we've been doing. So for part A. It's going to be um. Look for FY of. FY of Y. That's what we're looking for, right? CDF of Y. Is equal to the probability that Y is less than Y. Which is equal to the probability that. E to the negative X is less than Y. Take the lawn of both sides, probability that negative X is less than lawn Y, doesn't flip the. Inequality. And this is the probability that X is greater than lawn Y. Which is uh, uh, one minus the probability that X is less than lawn Y. Is one minus FX of lawn Y. I'll just leave that on the screen for a second. I did that fast. Because he, I do it, yeah.
With negative X, uh, when we move that over to the other side, um, by dividing by negative one, uh, how, shouldn't that make it a Y to the negative one?
Uh, oh, yeah, yeah, this should be, this should be negative flaw, like. Negative, yeah, negative law.
Uh, what did you do in the second line?
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I basically like, so I took either negative X less than Y, and I take the lawn of both sides. One. On it, right? So this is, this is lawn E to the negative X is lawn, well, negative X times lawn E. Less than lawn Y. Lawn E is one, negative X plus. Make sense?
Yeah, good. So why do you do, why do you do one minus probability of X is less than negative lawn Y?
Cuz CDF, CDF is always X less than a number. CDF is always, it's never X is bigger than a number. The CDF is always defined as X less than, so it has to be written.
I have to keep reminding myself of that stuff.
It's all good. It's all good, yeah. So we're here. Let me just like open the solution just to make sure I'm going wrong as I'm. Wrong, so uh, yeah, I guess. So what's FX lawn Y? Uh, is that we're looking for, looking for CDF? Yeah, we're looking for CDF. So we're looking for FX lawn Y now, right? Well. This depends on some things, right? So FX lawn Y, if um, lawn Y is less than zero, right? Lawn Y. Is negative law Y, is less than zero. Then um, zero, right? So the CDF, you're like, imagine this line, you're thinking about all the probabilities less than this line. So if this is lawn Y, if it's less than zero, zero. If lawn Y is between zero and one, right, then it's this integral. It's whatever this integral is here. And if it's greater, then it's just one. So if negative lawn Y. Greater than one, it's one, and if negative lawn Y. Is between zero and one, well, it's that integral that I was talking about, right? It's the integral from zero to uh, negative lawn Y. Of uh, what whatever our function or uniform is one. One DY. Um, so now we just work it out. We simplify our integrals a little bit, simplify our uh. Inequalities, so let me just do that here. Lawn Y greater than zero.
Adam, not that it really matters for this question, but is there a specific reason why it would be DY and not DX for the integral? Obviously, like, it it's not gonna make a difference in the.
Oh, yeah, I would, it would be, it would be DX.
It should be DX, okay.
It should be. Yeah, you're right, it doesn't make a difference, but it should be. It'd be. No, the negative sign, negative sign doesn't just come out of here. It doesn't just come out. Oh, I guess this is actually just, no, yeah, yeah, negative sign doesn't come out. Just state, basically.
Adam?
Yeah.
Okay, so can I just write negative lawn Y instead of in the um, integral?
Sorry, one second, I can't quite hear you. It's a little muffled. Can you say it again?
Can we just put negative lawn Y rather than putting the integral?
Uh, here? Yeah, it'll end up being, yeah, that's what it'll end up being. Yeah, yeah, this, but this is like. This will end up being just negative lawn Y. It'll be negative lawn Y minus zero, which is, yeah. But that's like, this is how you get it, right? This is how you get the, the, that expression. If this was some other, if this was some other PDF here, then you couldn't just say negative lawn Y. Uh, okay, so uh, great, let's keep going. So now uh, we'll just do one minus zero, so. Um. Question? No? Uh, so one minus, we have zero, so this is, this is if Y is greater than one, right? This is gonna be negative lawn Y. Um, yeah, if uh. So this condition, I'll just add this condition, so this condition will be uh, zero greater than lawn Y. Greater than negative one, E to the both sides is gonna be one less than Y, less than one over E. Here is gonna be lawn Y less than negative one, E to the both sides is gonna be Y is less, what, less than one over. So um, here, it's going to be uh, so the one, if, so it's, so sorry, here it's uh, one Y. One over E, one if Y is less than. So one minus zero is one if Y is greater than one. One minus negative lawn Y is one plus lawn Y. If Y is between one over E. And one. One minus one is zero if Y is less than one over E. Um, and that's your FY. Why? That's little, we usually write it upside down, right? We usually write it backwards, so we say, we put the lower bound on the top. Right? We kind of work left to right on the Y axis, on the, on the. Well, the Y axis, actually, in this case, it's true, but. The horizontal axis, so uh, I would say one over E Y one. That's how we usually write, equivalent, completely equivalent. Right? Uh, how would we know which one is CDF? Yeah, capital F, it's okay, yeah, so capital F is is CDF. Lowercase F. Is lowercase F. Yeah, I haven't written lowercase F in this question, probably here, this PDF. Right? The CDF is cumulative, that's the C, the C is the important thing, cumulative, so it's up to a point. PDF is just the probability in a section. Um, good, that's it. That's it for the CDF. Now, let's do the PDF of Y.
Sorry, one question.
Yeah.
Sorry, one last question. Uh, if you could scroll up to the integral in the PDA, in the C CDF.
Was it here?
Yeah, uh, right here, yeah. So like, your your bounds are negative lawn Y and zero. Shouldn't it be like between zero and one? That's, this is why I got confused.
Uh, that's true for here, for this one, because, but if, if uh, if. This is negative lawn Y. So if negative lawn Y is between zero and one, then your your probability is this, right?
Not one, okay.
If i- if negative lawn Y is passed here, then it, then it is zero to one, right?
Then it's a third condition.
Exactly.
That's up.
But that third condition, that that integral is always gonna be one. So I just put one right away.
Okay, cuz it's like a, well, it's like a unit step function, so it's gonna be one.
It's it's just, it's just the proba- property of the property of the PDF, is that it has to be one.
That's how I see it. So like, I just said, I just said it that way, sorry.
Okay. So uh, yeah, that's, that's it for part uh. Oh, visually, what does CDF represent? Well, I mean, if you have some sort of PMF, right, like probability of P PDF, I mean, there's sort of PDF here, right? And this is your like, you know, this is your problem, so like. The P, the PDF is about like, you know, to figure out the probability that you get something in this range of your random variable, you integrate it, right? So the CDF is like, is cumulative, so it's like, okay, so like, if you just put in one number, you don't need it, you don't need two bounds. You just like, what's the probability up to this point? All this probability up to this point, all the way from negative infinity to that point that you're trying to find. So this is like a PDF, EDF. But this integral, integral from negative infinity to whatever this is, let's say A, right? Of the PDF. D whatever, X axis of DX. Is, that's by definition, your CDF. So. The. Or B, I guess. EDF of Y. EDF of Y is just gonna be, so FY of Y is just D D Y. FY Y. The derivative with respect to Y is zero if Y is between one and E. Uh, one over Y if Y is between. One and E and one, one over E and one. Uh, and zero if Y is greater than. So you just take the derivative. Yeah.
Scroll up for a second.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, right here. Wait, uh, did you go one one above? How did the one minus get integrated?
Oh, yeah, well, one minus, one minus zero is one. One minus negative lawn Y is one plus lawn Y. One minus one is zero. And then I just flipped, I flipped it order, I flipped the order here just so that it's the correct order that we usually do it in, but yeah.
Okay, okay, and the one over E?
Uh, like this one?
Yeah, like right at the.
From like this bad here, so we took the, we took this. I multiplied every.
I said it for the Y.
I'll play everything, everyone, yeah, and there you go, I said.
Okay, thank you.
C is the expected value of Y, that's what we're trying to find, expected value of Y, which is the integral from negative infinity to infinity. Of Y FY of Y DY. Um. So what does this mean? For us, this PMF, PDF. Only exists between one over E and one. So this is just the integral from uh, one over E, the one of Y times one over Y. DY. Which is just one minus one. So you have to look at your P DF. Which only exists between zero everywhere else. Integrate from that. Y times the function, and you get that. Um, okay, uh, that's all my questions. That's all the questions I have. I don't have anymore. Yeah, that's all. All of the four questions. It took longer than I thought, actually. Uh, yeah, I mean, like, I'm, I have more time, I like, I can do more questions, but I just don't have any more questions to do. So if anybody has any questions, I'll stick around for a few more minutes. Chapter three CDF question? Yeah, I mean, I did, so we didn't do any chapter three questions. I did do a CDF question in the last live stream. If I just go back to the last live stream here. Uh, right? This one. So I did this in the last live stream. Discrete random variable to follow, follow PMF. We have a PMF. Find the CDF. Uh, and so we we do it like this. So that's. That's the answer. I have one question someone sent me. Try it. Did we do this one before? Don't think so. That is the lab problem, I think, right? Don't remember. Yeah. Little. Uh. Can almost read it. So you go to a casino. With exactly sixty three dollars. At this casino, the only game is roulette. And the only bets allowed are red or green. The roulette wheel is fair. So probably your red equals probably a green is a half. You have the following strategy. You first bet a dollar, you win, receiving double your bet. If you win. Receiving double your bet. You quit and go home. If you lose, then you bet two dollars. If you win, you couldn't go home. You lose, you bet four dollars. In fact, whenever you lose, you double your bet until you either win a bet or lose all your money. However, as soon as you win a bet, you couldn't go home. But Y be the amount of money you take home. Find the PMF of Y and the expected value. Sure. So, uh, Y is the amount of money you take home. So what like let's just start by what's the range of Y? Let's just try to think about this, the range of Y. Right? So you either take, um, uh, you win, uh, two dollars, right? Because you bet you bet a dollar. If you win, you double your bet and you take you go. Uh, or you win, uh, if you lose, then you bet two dollars. And then if you won that time, you win four dollars. If you lose, you double your bet. Now you're, uh, betting four dollars. If you win, you win eight dollars. You lose, you double your bet. If you win, you double that. So you get sixteen. Right? Uh. But. Do we have to account for the fact that you're? If you lose. That Y be the amount of money you take home? Do we have to account for the fact that you're losing? How does it work? You bet one dollar. If you win. You lose. Whenever you lose, you double your bet until you either win a bet. Or lose all your money. Yeah, okay. But this is like not Y. This is like let Y, I don't know, X. This is an X. The amount of money you can possibly win. So at. Yeah, da, da, da. X is like the amount of money you can possibly win from this game. How much money you can win from this game? Um, so. Here. Yeah. Not just what you want. Yeah. How much money you take home? So. To find the amount of money you actually win, let's say, okay, let's just say you win in the first first attempt, then you, yeah. Then you. Bet a dollar. And you take home sixty three dollars plus the extra dollar you want. Forget this question. Let me see. I know someone posted something about. So. Yeah. Either PMF. Y. Okay, let's say. Just to get an idea, let's play the game for a second, right? So first attempt, first attempt. You have, uh, you have some amount of money in your pocket, right? So you have sixty three dollars in your pocket. Let's say you won on the first attempt. You still have your sixty three dollars. And then, uh, you bet a dollar and then you gain two dollars. But really, you're if you won on the first attempt, then you have sixty three plus one dollar. If you win on the second attempt. Right? And you started with sixty three dollars. Two dollars. You bet a dollar, but you didn't get that dollar back. You bet two dollars and you got four dollars. Uh, you won the second attempt. So this is, uh. Still sixty three plus one dollars. You went on the second. Am I understanding this right? You bet a dollar, you lost. You bet two dollars. You won, so you get four dollars. Yeah, okay. Third attempt. Sixty three dollars. You lose the first one. You lose the second one. You lose the fourth one, but then you gain, uh. But then you win on this one. So you get eight dollars. Or no, you're doubling. Yeah, you're doubling your bet. So this is, uh. This is this is seven. So you still get sixty three plus one dollars. Yeah. Yeah. So I think that's right. That that's what someone just posted. So if you you win on the eighth attempt. Then you're gonna get sixty three minus all this stuff. You're gonna get regardless, you're gonna get sixty four dollars. If you win it all. But the maximum amount. Uh, what is the question? There's a certain number of attempts were allowed to. Do. Unless you lose six times. Is that the? Yeah, six times because, yeah, yeah, that makes sense because then. You're gonna have a negative amount of money, right? It's gonna be sixty three minus one minus two minus four. So let's just say so it's sixty three minus one minus two minus four minus eight, um, plus sixty. This is still gonna be sixty four dollars. And we're gonna have sixty three minus one minus two minus four minus eight minus sixteen minus plus thirty two. This is still gonna be sixty four dollars. Uh, this is the fourth attempt, the fifth attempt, sixth attempt. So this is, um. This is zero dollars, I think, right? Like that sixty three sixty three minus one minus two minus four minus eight minus sixteen. Oh, no. Plus thirty two is ten. So ten dollars. On the sixth attempt, it's gonna be sixty three minus one minus two minus four minus eight. Minus sixteen minus thirty two plus sixty four. Equals sixty four. So. This must be, um. No, sorry, this is supposed to be. Oh, that can't be right. What? Sixty three minus one minus two. Minus four minus eight. Oh, yeah, yeah, minus the. Minus thirty two is zero plus sixty four. So you can't play more. Games than this. These are all the possible games you can play because, uh, you have sixty three dollars, right? You have sixty three dollars. So what are the possible outcomes for the amount of money you take home? Well, you either take home, uh, sixty four dollars or zero dollars. Right? If you win, so so the probability, so Y is the amount of money you take home. The range of Y is you either take home sixty four dollars. Or zero. Right? Because it what if it takes you more than six tries to win? Then you do it. Oh, this is right. I don't know. I'll take the solution after. This is my thoughts here. Um. So then if we want to find the P D uh, PMF, right, of Y, so it's just FY. Of Y, well, we need to assign some sort of probability to, uh, so it's probably that Y equals zero, Y equals sixty four. Basically. You win if you get, uh, if you get a, uh, um, what is it? You, oh, if you get a if you guess correctly, um. Yeah, if you guess correctly. The first the binomial sum from one to six. Yeah. So if you win in the one of the first six attempts, then you get sixty four dollars. Otherwise, you don't. You get zero. You lose like. So, uh. Yeah. So what's the probability that you win in one of the first six attempts? Well, what's the probability you win in the first attempt? The probably you win in the first attempt. Let's say you, you know, it's roulette. So you either it's either like heads or tails, basically, red or green. So that means you get, um, uh, you know, you guessed red and it was red, right? Let's say red is the correct answer. But let's just say just for simplicity, red is correct. So, um, like you're guessing red. So let's say it just was red. So there's, uh, one fifty percent chance that it's gonna be that, right? Then here. This is the first attempt. On the second attempt. It's it's green and then red. On the third attempt, it's green twice. And then red. So on the Kth attempt, it's one half to the K minus one or to the K. It technically is one half of the K minus one times one half, which is one half of the K. I think it's geometric is what we're looking at here. So we just wanna take the sum of this for K goes from one to six. Right? Some K goes from one to six of one half to the K. That's right. That's for this one. So actually, this is one minus this. Right? So that's one half plus one quarter plus one eighth plus one sixteenth plus one thirty second plus one sixty four. That's some number. Um. So I get. But that's if the answer is the same all six trials. Uh. Or. He bets with he bets with sixty three dollars. The sum of this is sixty three. The sum of this is sixty three. This is the probability, like this is the probability of winning on the Kth attempt. Right? One half times one half. Eight times. So. Winning one in the first six attempts, right? First six trials of this would be the sum of them. I think this is right. I get. I get zero point ninety eight. Or. Whatever three seven five. Let's check the is there an answer? I think someone posted their solution for this, right? Let me see. Uh, is this it? I can't tell. Somebody posted their solutions. We we find that as a file. Or no, maybe has a link. There, I think this is it. No, isn't it? Wait, maybe it is. I don't know what's up going bring me to a different file. Okay, yeah, I'm not sure. It can't find the someone before posted their lab solutions, but I can't find can't find them now. So I don't know. This is this is my answer. So this is gonna be, uh. This is going to be zero point nine eight four three seven five. Y is sixty four. And this is gonna be zero point whatever one minus this, right? So. One minus answer. Zero point zero one five six two five. Y equals. Uh, two. I don't know if this is right. This is my these are this is what I think. This is what I would do. I I don't. I don't know. As soon as you're in the bed, could go home.
Well, I have a question for this. So like, can you just explain to me how, uh, next to the at the very top? You know, like at the first party solution, for every attempt, you have, uh, the probability of red. And can you explain to me what that means? Like what you're trying to.
Yeah, like basically, the game is the game is like, it's basically heads or tails, but it's red or green, right? So so let's just say the correct answer is red. Let's just say what that lands on like, it doesn't really matter like what it is like the correct. Let's just say the correct one's red. So what? What I'm saying basically is like. On if you if you get it right on the first time, it's you guess red, right? Right? Like, or no, sorry, you always let's say. Let's say you're always guessing red. That's what I mean. Let's say you're always guessing red. So that means on the first attempt, it was red. Right? That means that that's what it means. But on the second attempt, if if it takes you two tries, that means it was green and then red. Right? So this is kind of like, this is the green. This is these are the greens, right?
So this is a geometric series then.
Uh, it would be a geometric series. Yeah, and a geometric. Yeah.
Artists already interrupt you there, but I just kind of went straight to it.
Good. Yeah, geometric series. That's that's right. Exactly right.
Yeah. So like, it's just, uh, let me just go through it again. So first time you get it right, red. Second time it's green, but then red.
Yeah.
And then the third time it's, uh, third attempt is green twice and then red again.
Yeah.
And then you keep doing that until you get, uh, half times to, uh, to the power of your K K attempt.
Exactly, right? And then if I want, and that's the probability of this happening. Then the probability of getting in the one to six is just the sum.
Yeah, one to. Okay. And here, does it really matter which one, like if red is the right one or green is the right one? Does it really matter?
I don't think I don't think. No, I don't think.
It's like they have the same probability.
Same. Exactly. They have the same probability. Exactly.
Okay. And then after that, you write your PDF as like the if you could scroll down to like the sorry, not PMF, sorry. Uh, probability mass function. Yeah, you read it as like the geometric series and then you what's the what's? What's the next thing you do? Why is your final answer like that decimal number? Because this part is.
I just computed. I just computed this. This is like this. It's a finite sum, right? It's not an infinite sum.
Yeah, one to six attempts.
I just computed this and.
Okay, okay, I see what that see what that is. It's also asking for expected value.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just do. It would just be sixty four times this, basically.
Oh, okay.
Sixty four. So expected value. Of Y would be sixty four times zero point nine eight or thirty seven. Because it's the sum. X F X X, right? But so that would be this. Plus zero times zero point zero one. Five six two, but this is zero. That's just.
Okay, yeah, that that would just be zero. Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
But really, one of my questions is is when you're given like this type of problem, usually I kind of freeze because like I'm just trying to understand the question. So I'm just wondering, how do you go about trying to break it down?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard. These are like, this is a hard questions because you have to really think like you really have to think about what's happening, right? So just start with anything you know, like I start with the range. Sure, I can think about what's the possible outcomes, right? I can start with that. This isn't even right. This is for X, but anyways. And then and then I was like, okay, but this isn't really helping me. So let me just try to play the game a little bit. Let's play the game and see what happens. Right? So let's say it takes me one attempt, two attempts, right? And then from there, I can start seeing some sort of patterns that are happening. I can think about the probability of the of each of these attempts happening and so on, right?
Right? Okay. Yeah, those are all my questions for this one. Thank you so much.
No problem.
So basically, if we go to the casino today and bet six times on the on red, it's like a ninety whatever chance of winning.
Of winning at least once.
At at least once.
Uh, yeah, that's 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 very high. It's way higher than I thought it would be.
That's what I'm thinking too, right? Like if you bet red six times with sixty four dollars.
But I guess you are like if you bet more money, you also double your like earnings.
Yeah, yeah.
You double your earnings as well, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So you'll make the money back.
That's true.
Hard to kind of tell. Hard to kind of. I don't know. I don't know, to be honest, right? Okay, I got one more question. This is probably the last question for today. Okay, I got one more question here. And then, uh, yeah, so here let X be uniform negative pi over two to pi. Y is sine X. Fine FY of Y. Similar question to what we've been doing. Let me. TA said there was a mistake in what in the. Solution or something? Oh, negative pi over two to pi over two? Sure. Let's do that. Makes sense. So, um, uh, why is I? I mean, let's just let's just do the the normal motions, right? So F Y like we're looking for this FY, but we always start with F this capital FY CDF. Is the probability that Y is less than Y. Which is the probability that sine X. Is less than, um, Y. Which is the probability that X is less than sine inverse Y. That's why this pi over two pardon. Um. Uh, yeah. I don't think the inequality flips. I don't know, to be honest, but I don't think the inequality flips, which is by definition FX, uh, F sine. Which is by definition, F X, uh, F sine, F X sine inverse Y, right? That's it. Oh, yeah, chapter four question sixteen is not on the midterm. That's crazy question, crazy question. I remember that now, crazy question. It's, it's mixed random variable. Great. So now we want to, we know that F, we know that F Y of Y is equal to this, right? So derivative both sides is going to be F Y of Y. Derivative of this is going to be F X of sine inverse Y. Right? And, uh, here I want to multiply by the derivative of sine inverse. I don't remember the derivative of sine inverse. But yeah, I don't know. I'd Google it, I guess. Derivative is one over one over root one minus Y squared. So, uh, this. Uh, and now F X of sine inverse Y, right? Well, this depends on, this depends on, uh, where, where sine inverse Y is, right? So our, our uniform distribution is from negative pi by two to pi by two. So if sine inverse is in this range, sine inverse Y is in this range. Uh, yeah, if sign is in this range, then it's going to be, well, what's this height? The height is one over pi over two minus negative pi over two. Which is one over pi. Yeah, we'll see. I don't know. Hopefully not. So one over pi, so this is just one over pi here. So if, uh, is P S Y is now, and so if, uh, sine inverse Y is between negative pi by two and pi by two. Yeah, between negative pi by two and pi by two. Uh, then it's one over pi times, times one over one minus Y squared. Zero other. So the answer finally is going to be one over pi root one minus Y squared. Taking sine of both sides, sine of pi over, sine of pi over two is one, sine of negative pi over two is negative one. So if Y is between negative one and one. That's my answer. Which I hope is right. I, I don't know. I can't check the solution, so I don't know.
Adam, the reason that it's, uh, uh, one over pi is just because regardless of whether, uh, regardless of the function value, F X of sine inverse of Y, F X of whatever is always equal to one over pi, correct?
If, if in this range, yeah, in this range. Okay, there we go. That is, uh, that's all the questions for today. Then that's, that's the last question for today. I gotta get ready to go now. So, uh, how does everybody feel about all the questions we covered? Make my head a little bit bigger now. Which distribution? I mean, definitely know how to do the standard distribution, like the, the normal, standard normal distribution that I did at the start here, this kind of stuff. Otherwise, you don't have to memorize how to do too many particular distributions. What's probably the good chat question from chapter one, chapter two? Probably pretty low. I would say pretty low. I don't know, I can't put a number. Something better about this midterm than midterm one? Yeah, I agree. As long as, as long as there's like reasonable questions. And there, the first midterm was pretty reasonable, the questions. So I'm, I'm not too worried. See, if he only does chapter four, it shouldn't be difficult, but he won't only do chapter four. There'll be some small other things from other chapters. I mean, I would think you need to know exponential, not gamma. I don't think you need to know gamma at all. But I would think you need to know exponential, but it's not on the formula sheet, so I don't know. Probably not then. Okay, I will stop recording.